Board of County Commissioners, now in session. We'll begin with prayer followed by a pledge. Commissioner Jones, you lead us in prayer, please.
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for the opportunity to be here. We thank you today for the opportunity from your word to ask for wisdom when we don't have it. We do that today and we know that you will not withhold it from us. May I ask the Lord for prudence and knowledge today also, in Christ's name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning to everybody in the audit.
Morning, Commissioner.
Next on the agenda would be the approval of minutes.
So moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next would be payment of county bills.
So moved.
Sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next would be Department Director's report. Mr. Howard Neighbors, Superintendent of Public Work.
Good morning, Commissioners, how y'all doing? Excuse me. I've got three or four items. One of them is the Truck Creek Bridge, which we had to close a couple of weeks ago, which they have started on it yesterday. They were working on it, so hopefully by this week they should have it finished up.
Good morning, if you'd like. Item number six on my report. Staff has notified in January 17th that FDOT was closing the bridge, that 494-096, which is Mill Road over Truck Creek, due to serious deficiencies, which was damaged to the trucks. It's my opinion that the repair of this bridge was of utmost importance. I contacted Broad Spectrum for a quote. After Broad Spectrum was able to locate a replacement truck, they quoted a price of $6,960 to cover material and installation and agreed that the county will not be invoiced until the bridge has been inspected and approved for opening by FDOT. Board action to approve the repairs.
Pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Now, I will say, if I decide I'm gonna let Mr. Neighbors continue, his concern is, and I agree with him, is that the state uses this with logging trucks and different heavy equipment. We're paying the price to repair it, they're not, but they're the one that uses the bridge for their convenience, and I don't know if we want to consider a weight limit. The board and Howard needs to discuss this further, because he claims that's where he thinks some of the damage-
Well, yeah, a single-icicle vehicle ain't, you know, cracking trucks like that, so on the panel, I take it back, but... And you've got log trucks, and you also rock trucks and stuff that go across that bridge.
Do they have to cross that bridge?
They could probably go around, but it would be, you know, it all depends on where they would be logging at, so...
My suggestion would be to, I mean, this is why we brought away things in the past, is get with Division of Forestry and see if they'd be willing to work with us, but we need a weight limit on any of our bridges like that.
There is a weight limit there. There's a weight limit on-
How much is it?
I wanna say forty-eight.
Forty-eight tons?
Tons, something like that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But the bridge is getting older, and the older it gets, the more problems you're gonna have, and that's just a start with that one panel, so...
Forty-eight tons is ninety-six thousand pounds.
That's ninety-six thousand.
You can't run up down the road with ninety-six thousand pounds.
I'm not for sure. There's a weight limit there. Maybe twenty-eight.
It's twenty-eight tons.
Twenty-eight, okay, yeah.
Twenty-eight. Fifty-six.
Yeah, yeah, which is heavy too, so...
Yeah.
Michael, do you have something? You wanna chime in on this?
Well, I'm gonna follow the Commissioner's lead and communicate with Forest. I probably believe Mr. Rowan would be the better person to do that, but y'all have in the past imposed weight restrictions. I believe the maximum cap has been five thousand pounds on certain roads and bridges in order to cut down on these maintenance costs to the people of Franklin County, when these trucks that are not county trucks are the ones creating the damage, for example, the forestry trucks.
Well, and that's considering, considering the saying that probably in all likelihood that the damage that we have to the bridge is basically caused from all the log trucks that comes back and forth across that, who log the state property. So, I mean, I would just, you know, say, give them a benefit to try to see if they wanna help out any way, or... They did last time when we put the Bailey Bridges in, they did, and it was kinda like a joint effort many years ago, so just do that. But I agree, we've gotta have a weight limit on it.
Michael, on this particular item that says we're not being invoiced into the bridge that's been inspected and approved by DOD, well, we need to see what they think about, you know, what is the bridge capable of handling? In other words, put the buck back on their shoulders and let them tell us what they think the bridge is capable of handling, because obviously there's been too much weight going across there to bust the bridge, the way Mr. Howard was talking about, so when you're writing that letter, have them see what they think about the weight limit that's currently on the bridge, and what their recommendation is of lowering the weight limit on that bridge to keep this from happening again, because the county can't continue to, you know, put out $7,000 every time something happens to that bridge, and the state's already involved, because they gotta approve before it can be opened, so what does the board think about that?
I think it'd be a good way to approach it. I think that's supposed to do it.
I make a motion for Michael to get in contact with the state foresters, see if they can help us with the bridge.
With the cost.
With the cost of it, because they had three logging crews out there for over a year.
And then also include my comments about-
The comments that Chairman made.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion?
Just one, just one point. Y'all will remember, last year, right before hunting season, during hunting season, the state came in there and condemned four or five of the Division of Forestry bridges in there. So, I mean, this is an ongoing problem. We need to rectify the problem.
That's the only way they had out of the woods, is that one area.
Any other discussion? We do have a motion, a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Okay, then I, we got a call yesterday on Timber Island Boat Ramp, which is the dock. I went and looked at it, the dock, there's a lot of repair on it, and all the underneath braces is broke, and you've got about three pylons that also is broke completely in two, so...
Do we need to, Chairman? Do we need to shut it down temporarily, or do something?
Probably shut it down for now, you know, kind of with the pylons and stuff being broken, the braces, and then maybe somebody could, my opinion would be, you know, just redo the dock, because it's been there a long time, so...
Is that where more of the boats after they launch?
Yeah, sir. It's the left dock that we got in there, which belongs to the county.
It's about twenty-foot long.
Yeah.
Ain't very gay. I make a motion for Michael to put it out for bids, to find somebody to fix it.
I second it. Can you include shutting it down until we, we're responsible for public safety, and we need to shut it down until we don't want nobody to get hurt on it?
Yeah, we'll shut it down until we get it fixed.
Okay.
Let's just shut the dock down, not the boat.
Yeah, just the dock.
Nothing wrong with the boat ramp, it's good.
Boat ramp's good, it's just a little old strip of that dock, it ain't very long.
Yeah.
So you amended your motion to reflect that, will you?
Yeah.
I amend, ma'am.
Okay, so we have to have a motion, a second on the floor, to go out for bids, fix that dock. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries also.
Okay. Then we got, they've been logging on, off of Jeff Sanders Road, which is the Kelly Road, off the Kelly Road, which they've been crossing, the Jeff Sanders Road, and a guy called me yesterday and said they was finished with that, that they will be moving out this morning. Then I got another item is the Mack Dump Trucks. I think Michael called the people about the Mack Dump Trucks, and anything with the leasing stuff, anything over forty thousand miles on the dump trucks, ever five thousand miles over forty thousand, the county will be penalized fifteen hundred dollars, ever five thousand miles over forty.
How many miles you averaging a year?
We've averaged out, we look back for the last five years, and the highest was thirty-two thousand.
Okay, so that should fall into what you've been doing every year?
Yeah.
If it'd be an emergency, probably-
Well, if you get a bad storm and weather, you just, you know, we could try it out, you know, the other county like it, you know, says it's a good deal, but we try it out and it don't work, then we can go to something else.
Uh, anything else, Mr. Howard?
That's it.
I understand you have an employee retiring?
Yes, sir. Tommy Sadler retired March the fifteenth.
March fifteenth.
Yes, sir. Which we'll have a party for him, see if he wanted, you know, do the thing at the shop like we usually do, right there at the office, so we throw a party for him, which will be that March fifteenth, it'll be on a Thursday.
So at next board meeting, we'll need to authorize for you to be able to go out and replace him?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just bring that up on your next report, next board meeting, we'll take care of that.
How many years has Mr. Sadler been?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine years.
Been a long time, yeah.
Does the board have anything for Mr. Howard this morning?
Thank you for everything you do, Howard.
Thank you, ma'am.
Be no comments from the board? Thank you, Howard.
Y'all have a good one.
Next will be Mr. Fondle Davis, Solid Waste Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have an agenda here, a lengthy agenda. First item I have for animal control position is for board's action. Animal Control Officer William Key will be retiring on March the first, leaving a vacant position to be filled. I am requesting the board allow me to advertise consecutively in-house and publicly for disposition.
So moved. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Next item would be employee Dura Buddy Chambers. Buddy is transferred from Park and Rec to a permanent part-time position back in November to a solid waste operator. Positive states an employee must possess a Florida commercial driver license A or B and shall be obtained within the ninety days of hiring. Mr. Chambers has been unable to obtain the CDL within his ninety days, but had asked to transfer back to the permanent position, a permanent part-time position in Park and Rec. I have a letter here that Mr. Chambers wrote to whom it may concern, January 29th, eighteen. I talked with my boss Fondle Davis about me returning to Parks and Recreation. I realize it's only part-time, but I'm now raising my granddaughter and can't afford to be without employment. I like where I am at now, but I don't feel I can pass the CDL test, because I have really bad test anxiety. I've been employed with the county for two years of March 2018 and would like to continue working. So I need to know if the board will allow Mr. Chambers to go back to permanent part-time.
I make a motion for him to get back. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massie. Do we have a second?
Sir.
I have a second by Commissioner Jones. And Fondle, let's move on down where it says in addition.
Okay, in addition to the vacant Mr. Buddy leaving, that leave me on solid waste full-time, I would like to replace that position within-house.
So basically, you're gonna move him back and then hire to get you an equipment operator?
Right, right.
What the rule is on that?
As far as moving back?
Yeah.
Well, we talked with the labor attorney, and they say only within the ninety days and a day is, what makes it ninety days? He come on November the sixth, and here in February, so within the ninety days, and the labor attorney said it could, it could be done.
We have a motion and a second to let him go back, but I'd like to amend the motion and a second to allow Fondle to go out and advertise to hire, but it says motion to hire in-house, so...
Yeah, can I ask a question? Have you got a position open in the Parks and Recs that you can put him back in there? Or are you gonna have to make one, or what?
No, ma'am, I have, well, I do have one that's there and I can move to the, it's kinda like swapping. I have a guy there who has the CDL, Class A, and I could just move him up, and that would leave me-
And you do realize that being able to obtain the CDL is part of the condition of being hired?
Yes, ma'am.
Right? And that's the reason why he's unable to get them, and he feels like he's unable to get them?
Right.
And that's the reason why he wants to go back?
That's correct.
Because Parks and Recs does not require CDLs.
Right.
Am I right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's get the record straight on here, so it's not known, because I don't want to look like we're doing special favoritism to somebody. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
But, but, I mean, he is a good worker, and I've known him all my life, and, but, anyway, just wanted to make sure the record's straight on.
And you said you already have somebody in-house that has the CDL, so basically just swap the position?
That's right. He come on after Mr. Chambers moved up. We hired him in full at permanent part-time.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so can we amend your motion to allow that to happen, amend your second?
I'm in the second, yes, sir. Now, he'll be a full-time employee now, or what?
Mr. Chambers will move back to permanent part-time, at twenty-nine hours a week. That's year-round.
And then the other employee will?
Will move, and he'll be full-time, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on that issue? We do have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Also, I'd like to let the board know that Mrs. Melissa West was hired to fill the scare house position. The next item would be service contract for household solid waste. Mr. Richards, Richard Freight has submitted a contract to household solid waste from the Franklin County Central Landfield to Waste Management Spring Hill Landfield, at the rate of $385 per load, with a 0.05 fuel increase above 279 per gallon. Currently, it's being hauled by Aggreg Transportation LLC for $397.80 per load, with a 0.9 fuel increase above 2.75 per gallon. This board's action to accept the proposed contract for Mr. Richards.
I make a motion to accept it for Mr. Richards.
Sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? Attorney, you have reviewed the contract?
Yes, sir, I have. There are a few changes that I'm going to have to make to the draft that was submitted, but I have discussed those both with Mr. Davis and Mr. Richards, and they found those changes to be acceptable.
Are we legal in the way we're conducting this swap from Aggreg to Mr. Richards?
We don't have a written contract with the current hauler, so there is no necessarily any contract they've been writing where we have to give them a certain amount of notice. It's my understanding, I believe that Aggreg has already been informed by Mr. Davis that this was going to be coming up, I don't know, a few weeks back, I'm not sure the exact date, so Aggreg did know that this change was pending. I've just been made aware that we have both of the individuals in the audience, so that they want to address the board, it would be appropriate for you to allow them an opportunity to address the board. But in terms of how to move forward legally, there is no state law requiring that you bid out this services contract in your current local bidding process. Excuse me, procedures does not require you to bid out services contract. It is only for the bidding out for the purchase of tangible personal property, like a truck or a generator or something of that nature.
We do have a motion-
Just move forward if you'd like to.
Okay, we have, they have a motion, a second on the floor. I have a gentleman out there raise his hand. Would you please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep your statements as brief as possible.
Sir, I'm Willis Holly, I represent Aggreg Transportation. We were aware, Mr. Davis contacted us, and which we've been in contact with Mr. Davis, and we thought it might be a bid process. We were unaware that there's already been a price put out by a competitor, you know, and we understand local preference. I mean, that's, local preference is good, but obviously, we would love to keep the contract, and we were not notified that we could lower our price. I don't know if y'all were obligated to notify us or not, so, and listening to the attorney, I assume everything above board.
Yes.
So, we've been hauling that contract for fifteen years, and we're very aware of what it takes, equipment-wise. We have four pieces of equipment dedicated to that project, and that's very, very important, that garbage moves. And if your new person only has one trailer, which I understand, it's, you know, I can guarantee you, I've been in garbage business thirty years, and there's one certainty, it's gonna break, you know, things, things break. Mr. Davis knows that, anybody in the trucking, the garbage business knows that, and backup is very important. So, that's our statement. We've enjoyed doing business in Franklin County, and we would certainly appreciate any consideration.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Richards, you have anything you'd like to say? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Yes, sir. I'm Mike Richards, owner of Richard Freight, and I do understand also that it takes backup equipment, so I've got two trucks backed up, ready to go, and I purchased a 2017 new roll-off Bentley trailer, and it was very expensive, but I'm well aware of what it takes. I've been running Florida and New York for the last twelve years, and run a consistent, run it to the fish markets, and out of the twelve years, I never missed a market, on time, every time, and that's a pretty good statement of doing. I'm well aware, and I'm sure I can do this 115-mile run. So, like I say, I do have two trucks dedicated and a new 2015 Bentley trailer, so I believe we're prepared, and whatever it takes, if we need additional equipment, we'll make sure it happens. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Oliver would like to add an email that come from Aggreg that said the founder has proud conversation concerning hauling compact transportation to the Waste Management Landfield at Spring Hill. Our company, Aggreg Transportation, have been delivering these containers for waste of ten to twelve year. It is our understanding that the Waste Management Contract is due to expire March first, 2018. So that's, I just, I guess if the contract is awarded to Mr. Richards, I guess we'd need to make sure it go to March to give them enough time area.
So you want to continue that aggregate hauling until March?
To March, yes.
Okay, we also need to make this motion contingent upon the attorney's, he's got some stuff he needs to do in the contract, so we want to make sure that's, it's contingent upon the attorney and the county staff, Mr. Richards finishing up this contract.
Okay.
You amend your motion-
Yeah.
-to reflect that.
I'm in the second.
Commissioner Jones amends his second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
That's it.
That's it. Anything for the board from Mr. Fondle this morning?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I about forgot, I do have something I want to mention while Fondle's here. Did that thing print out, Michael?
I have a check.
All right, sorry. While he's going to check, then see if it actually printed, I want to talk to you about, following our conversation we've had a couple of times about waste oil pickup, I talked with them again at ARPC about the grant that the county has. Basically, they can, they can increase the grant, but if we're just going off the grant, the grant would cover the picking up of the oil once a month at three locations in the county, it would pay for that, but it wouldn't pay for the bins to collect the oil in. And if we tried to do it on a time basis, we'd buy one bin one next year and wait a year and buy another bin. I'm going to, if Michael's getting print out, hopefully it worked, to show y'all what we're talking about. I would like to see, make a motion to have county staff approach the two municipalities and see about us doing a joint effort, since the grant's gonna pay for the collection. See if the City of Appalachia, City of Caribou, be interested in purchasing one to put inside their city, and then the county can purchase one to put inside East Point somewhere, you know, for the residents of East Point. So we're kind of sharing the load here.
So you're making a motion to talk to them?
I'm making a motion for them to talk to them and try to see what we can do to get that done.
Second. Okay, let's see if Mr. Rowan comes back, because he'll be the one to make the contact, and I want him to get directions from the board.
That's right.
So...
I can tell you while we're waiting on him, I'm sorry, I meant to print this out in my house, and I just forgot it this morning. This, this unit I'm talking about is around $2,161, is how much it is. It holds 240 gallons of waste oil, double-oil container.
I think that email went out to all the commissioners.
Did it? Okay, I didn't know if it did or not.
I think it did.
Okay.
Thank you. They use them in the county and the city, right?
Yep, yep. Well, the idea behind Commissioner Lockley, if I may, is to try to get, because we're such a wide county, is to try to get multiple spots to best benefit citizens, because, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I know that there's a bunch of oil in our county that's not going into a collection properly. That's all I'm trying to get past.
I agree, I agree with trying to move forward on this, it takes our environment, makes us a lot cleaner.
Didn't print?
It did not print.
They said it was emailed to them, but I didn't want to worry about that. So, that's the unit we're talking about, Chairman.
This statement you were making, Commissioner Jones, is that in a form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
I second. And we had a second on that. Michael, what they're talking about is having you get in contact with two municipalities, Caribou, City of Caribou and the City of Appalachia, to see if they would be willing to purchase a container to put the oil in, as we have a grant to pay for picking it up and taking care of the oil, and then the county would pay for the one in East Point.
Okay.
And that's the motion that Commissioner Jones made, to try to get this oil collection going. It'll be a lot of help for our environment here across the county, if we can get this going and give people a place to put used oil, rather than it being dumped in the woods or what have you, get it disposed of properly. We do have a motion and a second on the floor.
Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question. Mr. Jones, this gotta be on a cement pad? The tank gonna have to be put on a cement pad?
I don't know for sure, but we can find out. I don't think, I don't think it does, because it's a double-walled containment unit.
Okay.
But we'll find out for sure.
Okay, 'cause I know a lot of them, you'd have to put on a cement pad.
Yeah, the one in the picture actually has wheels under it.
Okay.
Michael, if you would follow through on getting with the two municipalities and come back and let the board know exactly what their stance is, and in the meantime, find out if it has to be a concrete pad, as referred to by Commissioner Massie, is what this thing needs to sit on?
Lucky enough, we have representatives from both our cities in the audience today, so, yeah.
Okay, if you get with them, that's what the motion contains, motion and a second. Any further discussion on that issue? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
The compact is up and running now.
I was gonna ask the question about that, up and running, everything?
Everything good to go.
Okay. Any other questions from the board from Mr. Fondle this morning?
Yeah, Fondle, to you and your wife, we sorry about your law.
Okay, appreciate it, Commissioner.
Thank you, from the board.
Okay.
Thank you. Next would be Ms. Pam Brunel, Emergency Management Director.
She's at EOC, sorry, she's at an emergency management director's meeting this week.
No action items on the report. Next will be Mr. Eric Lovestrand, Extension Office Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. I did have one item in my report that I could use your assistance on this morning, and it relates to the renovation of the DEP facility here for the Extension Office in Appalachia. We do have the funding in place. DEP is requesting that we do a sublease on the parent lease that they have with the State Board of Trustees for the facility there, and one of the documents that they are required And, um, one of the documents that they are required to have for the application is a letter from the board supporting the application for a sublease. So, I just need to have a letter of that nature, so we can move forward in the application process for that.
Which is basically item number 12 of my, of my report, Commissioners. And Eric, a couple of things. One of the commissioners asked yesterday, uh, in this sublease, will we be responsible? Is it like a, a dollar a year rent? Will we be responsible for any maintenance? What, what will the sublease?
Okay, yeah. The agreement that I've talked with DEP about would be a zero-dollar lease for 20 years, and DEP is maintaining the ownership of the building and responsibility for the structure, basic structure of the building. So, if it needed a new roof, they would take care of that. The funding that we can put into it for the renovation basically is in lieu of us paying rent for 20 years. And then, at that time, they could actually go before the Board of Trustees to extend that agreement as well.
Attorney, I just want to be clear, this is just a letter su- supporting a lease? Eric has got to bring the actual lease to you.
Supporting application for a sublease, yeah.
That's all. I'd like to see the letter before it goes out. Okay.
Anybody else going, who going to be in there with you?
Uh, DEP will retain one of the office spaces in there, so they can house...
Who?
The DEP, Estering Research Reserve Staff will have one office space in the building, and we'll share spaces in that building as well, like the auditorium and the lab space in there. So, it'll be a shared facility in terms of the common areas and one office space for them.
But the one, the one major point, and I guess I was wanting to ask Michael what our responsibility was as a subleasing, but what you're stating is DEP would continue to take care of the building, we're putting money into the building to rehab it. So, the DEP and Extension Office will have an office in there. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir. Yes, sir.
Pleasure, the board.
So moved.
Most of it by Commissioner Lockman.
Say.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. That's the only item I had for action.
Any, any board member have anything from Mr. Eric this morning?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to ask a question. Mr. Eric, I meant to get in touch with you before I brought this up, and hopefully I'm not putting you on the spot. I just want to know a little bit of information. Later, we're having a, uh, public hearing about, uh, some stuff going on with the Business District on the island. There was some discussion last time we met about native or non-native plants, and it's been brought to my attention by several people, actually, that Florida has a friendly landscaping program.
Mm-hmm.
How would that apply to native versus non-nati... What we're looking at is the possibility of what we're doing in the Business District on the island, and we're trying to lay out where everything's going to be. And there was some discussion about only having plants there, being native plants versus non-native. And I really don't know what this program entails, and I was going to see if you might could speak something to that one of you.
Sure, sure. The Florida Friendly Landscaping Program is a University of Florida-based program, and that program is not specifically concerned with just using only native vegetation in the landscape, but it is concerned with using non-invasive species if they are non-natives. So, it doesn't necessarily restrict use of non-native vegetation, but it does have lists of plants that should not be used, because they are tending, ones that tend to escape into the natural environment. So, it does utilize non-native vegetation.
Okay.
Yeah, and it just makes good recommendations about what you need to stay away from, so you don't end up with problems.
Okay. I don't think it's a super-major deal, but since someone brought it to my attention, I thought I'd at least follow through and ask.
Sure. And I do have, um, guidebooks for that program, lists of species that are recommended for our part of the state, um, in all different categories from turf grass to shrubs to trees, you know, that are good species to use.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I'd be happy to provide more information on it if you need.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments from the board from Mr. Eric? Thank you, Eric.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next will be public comment, three-minute time limit. Please raise your hand. Great goodness, uh, I don't know who to pick first, just as you come forward, state your name for the record.
Before you start, Kevin, I want to explain something to the Commissioner. There was an error in the way I mannered my sent information to clerk's office. There's a solar, a, a letter by Solar Pounds in front of you. That's what Mr. Vegas is here to talk about this morning, correct? Because he sent another letter earlier about Triumph, and that's unrelated to this matter.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Kevin Vegas here. Just wanted to let you know that on April 10th, a Solar Co-op program is going to open in Franklin County that will be available to any property owner. It's a program that, uh, has happened in about 20 different Florida communities, from the Keys all the way through Orlando and Miami and Leon County. It's just a way of homeowners to band together and get a discount on pricing, uh, just like anything else. It's like a Sam's Club. So, homeowners get, uh, bids from licensed contractors and technical support from this nonprofit group that I'm a volunteer of. There's no obligation for anyone. You know, you get the bid like you would anything else, and then you choose whether to go forward with the purchase or not. But as I said in my letter to you, you all put solar on the roof here a number of years ago, and you paid about $4 per kilowatt. Prices now are down to about $2.50 per kilowatt, plus homeowners get a 30% federal tax credit. So, that means in the end, today, someone will pay less than half what you paid for up there. And I want to stress, you paid, it was a completely fair price six years ago up there. It's just the costs have gone way down. So, if anybody's interested, there'll be some public hearings, uh, in April and May. There'll be a three-month sign-up period with a webpage, and I'll give you all that information when it happens in April.
Thank you for coming forward, Kevin. Next.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Georgia Ackerman with Appalachia Cola Riverkeeper. I'm the newly-appointed Executive Director slash Riverkeeper. I know you all know Dan Tonsmore well. He sends his regard. He's in Idaho skiing this morning. Um, so, I'm here for two reasons. One, I wanted to introduce myself and, and reach out to you, so we can get to know each other a little bit more in some of the, um, projects that we're working on with Riverkeeper this year. Also, I sent you a letter very late yesterday afternoon, so I wanted to come read the letter, and, um, several board members are here. Rebecca Jettan will speak briefly as well. Um, recently, Calhoun County's comprehensive plan was amended to allow oil drilling and agricultural land throughout the county, including the Appalachia Cola Forest near the Dead Lakes. So, we wanted to bring that to your attention. You may be aware of that already. Riverkeeper has, um, tremendous concerns. Throughout the comp plan amendment process, Riverkeeper and numerous residents expressed concerns about potential impacts to habitat and drinking water sources, including impacts to users downstream, such as Franklin County residents. Wetlands and floodplain areas are not off limits to the drilling. We implored, we, as Appalachia Cola Riverkeeper and other residents, implored the Calhoun Commissioners to consider a list of recommendations that would reduce the environmental risk, along with reducing financial risk and liability to the county in the event of oil drilling-related accident or spill. None of the recommendations that we made were adopted at the time. As you know, comp plan amendments can be legally challenged through administrative hearing, excuse me, through the administrative hearing process, and additionally, there's a dispute resolution process for other potentially affected local governments, such as Franklin County, to address these types of concerns outside of a lawsuit. Sent you the letter with some resources. Um, that's, that's the, the letter in a nutshell. Um, I wanted to also include some handouts, which I, which I've brought extras with me that I'll, I'll, um, distribute. We included resources for the J Oil Field Map, which a lot of folks are familiar with, um, the J Oil Field being in the panhandle, with some information on numbers of spills related to both oil and brine, which are, which posed, uh, tremendous risk to everybody. Um, and we also included in the packet the recommendations that we shared with Calhoun County, which, again, they were recommendations to put in place the best possible safeguards that they could, um, if they were to move forward with, uh, the oil drilling, which at this time, like I said, the comp plan amendment process has, has been approved, um, at this time. Like to also welcome you to discuss these issues more fully, either through workshop process, or we're happy to meet individually with you. And likewise, Rebecca Jettan, um, board member, and I are here to answer questions.
They bound oil in Calhoun County?
They have, the county has approved the process for exploratory oil drilling. There are, there has been one permit for exploratory oil drilling issued to date, and it's my understanding several more have been, um, are in the process.
Any, uh, comments from the board on this issue? It i- it is a very concerning issue for myself. I talked to Mr. Tonsmore last week, and it's kind of a short notice for the board to take action, but, you know, when you're talking about the recharge areas and, and, and different things which goes into your groundwater, uh, everybody's aware of what's happening in Marianna right now with the injection well, uh, putting the leachate down in there, down into, I think it's a two-mile well that they've drilled up there, so they're in, uh, heated, heated battle over that. I don't know what the actual impact will be to Franklin County, but anything that's along the river, that would flow down the river and enter our bay is, is very concerning for me. I don't have enough information, uh, to really, uh, recommend the board take action. Wha- what is your suggestion, Attorney, on this particular issue? I know Mr. Tonsmore come down and talked to you about that.
He did, uh, last week after meeting with the chairman. Uh, Mr. Tonsmore came down to visit me at the chairman's direction, spoke with me at length for, I don't know, 45 minutes or so, something like that, maybe an hour, giving me a lot of background information on the, the history of, um, the, the oil drilling in Calhoun County and some of their environmental concerns and their efforts in trying to get Calhoun County Board of County Commissioners to adopt some environmental restrictions on, on where these wells could and could not be placed. Uh, they, they met with no success. Uh, I, I think some of the sense of urgency here is that Riverkeeper is facing a, uh, a filing deadline of December the 8th to challenge the comp plan amendment that has been approved by Calhoun County. Uh, I explained to Mr. Tonsmore, because this was literally probably Thursday of last week, that there was simply no way for me to do enough due diligence in coming back to the board and making a presentation to you here at today's meeting. However, I, I am glad that they're here and that they, they, you know, initiated the conversation, but I, I do agree with the chairman, there's not enough known information, uh, for me to make a recommendation, one way or the other. I mean, certainly, uh, there, there's not enough information, uh, to make the decision whether to file a lawsuit, challenge that comp plan amendment, or as Mr. Tonsmore had originally come to me, uh, expressing a desire that the county would, um, initiate conflict resolution procedures with Calhoun County. As you may remember, we have some small experience with that recently with the city of Appalachia Cola, as it refers to the Restore Act funding. Again, I'm not prepared to make a recommendation to the board, uh, to initiate any process or to join in any litigation this morning. If the board is, is so inclined, and you direct me, uh, to have conversations, uh, which I have not yet had with Riverkeeper attorneys, they have an attorney team, uh, I have not yet been in contact with Calhoun County Attorney Matt Fuquay. I wanted to get some, uh, direction from my board before I started, you know, making those inquiries and, and pursuing, uh, any due diligence and, and formulating a recommendation to come back to you on how to proceed. So, at this point, if, if the board is so inclined, then, uh, the most I would recommend is that you authorize me to conduct that due diligence and come back to you with a report, you know, possibly by the February 20th meeting.
When is the filing deadline? When is the...
When is the filing deadline?
I understand it's, uh, I, I, I have been told, and that's all I can say. I have been told it's, uh, it's February the 8th. Um, and so, in theory, if the Riverkeeper, uh, proceeds, as I perhaps correctly understand them to be proceeding, they're going to file a lawsuit challenging that, then you would be in a position at some point in the future, if you were so inclined, uh, to then file an action to intervene in that litigation.
Well, and, and, and that's my, that's my thinking. I wanted to hear what Chairman said, and I'm, I'm glad he did. I think you need to contact Calhoun County and its attorneys, uh, and commissioners, if you want to, to find out what the mindset is, and then proceed from there. Um, because it's like Chairman said, anything that happens upstream does come downstream. And it concerns me. I mean, we've been very diligent to support issues like, uh, no fracking, we believe in the no fracking, and all that, and I think this is just part of it. And so, I, uh, if the board don't have any other comments, I'm going to make a motion that we direct the attorney to get with, um, uh, the Riverkeeper's attorney and with, uh, Mr. Matt Fuquay of, um, Calhoun County, and see what we can do, and also look at it, what we may can do in the meantime, uh...
And Commissioners, if I may offer a quick...
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. And, uh, to see what we can do in the meantime to, uh, take care of the situation, um, without it going to court, maybe. And, and, you know, I, I don't know. I'm one of these people, I believe in home rule, and, but when it interferes in another county, because I'm fixing to bring up something else in just a little while, uh, then you, you trample on somebody's toes, you know? Uh, but, um, did you have something you want to add?
And, yes, I apologize, I thought you were done. I, um, wanted to clarify a date, deadline, but I'll wait.
No, I was just trying to get the attorney on it, because unless we direct him, he's not going to get on it, okay? So, that's why I was making a motion for that to happen. And, um, and, uh, but, uh, Mr. Chairman, do you want to add anything in my motion?
Yes, I'd like, I'd like a letter to go out to DEP that we're concerned about.
Okay.
Concerned about this issue.
Include that in my motion also?
You, you know, it, it is, you have to understand that Calhoun County is economically depressed, they're looking for jobs, I understand all that, for, for jobs here. But when it comes to the environment and, and the associated effects of potentially what they could be doing, you know, there needs to be safeguards put in place to protect the people downstream and, and our bay and our river system. And so, I, I agree that we need to take some kind of action. My question to the attorney is, is there some other action we can take after this February the 8th deadline? If the board so desire to take some kind of action to prevent, uh, and put safeguards in place, or recommend that they put safeguards in place?
Well, that's part of what I'm going to be exploring, uh, the, the two avenues that I've, I've mentioned earlier. One is potentially joining in, uh, and interpleting into any litigation that's initiated by the Riverkeeper, challenging the comp plan amendment is, is one option. A second option, uh, which does not require litigation, would be the dispute resolution procedures that, uh, Mr. Tonsmore came to talk to me about last Thursday. Other options might develop as I look at this, but those are the two most, uh, apparent options that are available for consideration at this time.
We do have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Not yet.
Second by Commissioner Jones. You had a comment, ma'am?
I, I just wanted, it actually, the, the attorney just addressed it, the, I wanted to clarify there are two separate processes, and the legal challenge deadline, correct, for the comp plan amendment is February 8th, which is separate from a government dispute resolution process.
Okay.
Okay, let's ask a question before we take a vote. Alan, you dealt with comp plans for many, many, many years. Do, I don't, I don't know if you're familiar, does, does Calhoun County have a different...
To my knowledge, it's, we all follow the same state rules, so...
That's what I thought. Okay.
Do we know what's going on? I mean, that's what I got to find out. I mean, is we getting on offense or defense? But we, I don't know what's going on with it.
I don't fully know either, and that's, that's why, that's why we put the attorney on, to bring, bring us back some information that we can make a decision on.
And we're happy to meet with any of you individually, or if we need to schedule a workshop to discuss it more fully, we're more than happy to, to work with you on that.
I think, I think the first thing we need to do is contact Calhoun County and pay them the respect that they would pay us, uh, as commissioners. And tomorrow, some of the commissioners will be traveling to Tallahassee, and you will see an opportunity to see some of your Calhoun County, 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 County. And that's what I said, before we go and do whatever we got to do, or feel like we've got to do, or even, even find out, we need to pay them the respect. It's all about respect here.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor? All opposed? The motion carries.
Yeah, appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming in.
My name is Rebecca Jettan. I'm representing the Board of Directors of the Appalachia Cola Riverkeeper, and I have a slightly different angle on this situation. As an advocate for the river and the bay, we try to make sure that the six counties along the river are informed about potential threats to the river. And so, over the past few months, we have participated in these public hearings in Calhoun County regarding amending their comprehensive plan to allow oil drilling. One of the things I learned along the way as I researched this is not only is there potential for oil spills, but as they bring the oil up, they also bring up a caustic, salty brine that must be disposed of, thousands of gallons of it a day in a producing well. And the way they get rid of it is they drive a pipe back down into the ground and inject And the way they get rid of it is they drive a pipe back down into the ground and inject it. And I think this is a potential threat to our drinking water aquifer. So what I'm encouraging you all to do is to amend your comprehensive plan to prohibit oil drilling onshore and offshore, and also to prohibit the disposal of waste through injection wells, just as you mentioned about Jackson County. There are very few oil wells in Florida. We have a few down in Big Cypress Swamp and Overin Jay. And this really is an issue that, as we worked on comp plans over the last 38 years, Alan and me, dealing with disposing waste under the ground just isn't something we've thought about. And it's really becoming an issue. I've worked down in the Florida Keys for years where that's the only way they can dispose of wastewater, treated wastewater. And that was a real eye-opener to me. And now this practice is beginning to spread up here. So I urge you to engage with us. Let us assist you in developing a comp plan amendment and regulations that would prohibit these activities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next. Public comment?
Good morning. My name is Bert Bolt, and I'm from Alligator Point. And I wanted to take an approach with regard to our county healthcare system. And I want to look at it from the standpoint of celebrating a Franklin County treasure, the infrastructure that we currently have. And most importantly, the employees that are there in that treasure of our healthcare system. I also wanted to encourage and compliment the fact that the board has asked for other local providers to provide input for the potential of our healthcare system here in Franklin County, Capital Regional Medical Center and Sacred Heart Hospital. And there's also the CHC program that you're also looking at. I wanted to offer another opportunity, separate from these three entities that I've researched, that I think has some merit. This is a consultation service that actually entertains facilitating healthcare local government infrastructure and facilitating the look at what kind of local healthcare government pattern of medical care we could have. So this company has nothing but consultative role here. And they look at your infrastructure and provide recommendations in a third-party objective plan. And I have the resources to show you on how to find that information. It might be another input as you look at that area. Our employees here in Franklin County are a valuable, valuable asset, and so is our structure. If you look at our county and how wide it is from west to east, and just when you were talking earlier about the disposal of oil and how you were going to strategically place oil disposal units from west to east, well, think of our medical system and the potential of perhaps reforming that in another more modern way of different specific clinics that might be spotted west to east. Anyway, that's a thought. I entertain the opportunity to hold myself up as a volunteer on behalf of your Weems Memorial Hospital folks. I am a physical therapist in private practice, and I do speak the mother tongue and the common language of this structure, and would be happy to be a volunteer in that area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, Ellen Pfeiffer, Concerned Citizens Franklin County. I've been, Weems, it's the big subject right now because it's the, it's the big money issue that's on the table. I have not been able to get the December financials. I'm real concerned about that. I don't know if they exist or don't exist. I've made two requests for them at this point. I understand that Weems had to borrow $150,000 yesterday from one of its funds. We, I want to applaud the Commissioners for reaching out to Capital Regional and Sacred Heart. And I've had the opportunity to call both entities to try to understand what they've been asked to do. And I think, right now, we maybe have missed a historic ability to innovate where we are. I want to tell you something that I found out when I talked to Roger Hall, President of Sacred Heart, last week. Sacred Heart delivered $12 million of healthcare to Franklin County citizens last year. That's more than Weems did. They provided a million and a half dollars of uncompensated care to Franklin County citizens last year. They employ 25 Franklin County citizens, have two facilities in Apalachicola right now, with a third soon to be, soon to be decided on in the county. They are the major healthcare provider in the county today. And I was a little bit concerned when we went over and talked to Sacred Heart. We said, "Our direction is Sacred Heart, are you willing to build us a new hospital?" Or words to that effect. Sacred Heart may have an entirely different approach, just as Capital Regional may have an entirely different approach to providing healthcare to the citizens of Franklin County. It has been over 10 years since we had a vote on building a new hospital. At that time, I very much remember the renderings of a two-story, approximate $31 billion hospital that was to be built. We're nowhere near that today. We're talking about renovating the existing hospital, adding a few thousand square feet of new build space. The whole situation with healthcare in this county has changed. And I would hope that we don't hamstring any of the potential healthcare providers, be they CHC, Capital Regional, or Sacred Heart, by telling them what we expect in terms of supporting the original vision of building a hospital when there may be better alternatives with better financial outcomes, better health outcomes, et cetera. I would ask that the county please revisit the instructions that they've given to the county attorney and to the county coordinator so that we can innovate instead of, instead of have this experiment turn into a stillborn event. There is some very good ideas out there. I don't know that we're tapping the potential for improved healthcare in the county. But it all goes to the instructions that have been given to staff as to what to come back with. I don't know that anybody's going to build us a new hospital. I don't know that there's money to do that. I don't know that the services that are going to be required for a hospital will ever be there in Franklin County. Well, but I do know that 80% of the healthcare in Franklin County is now being delivered outside the county. And that's not likely to change. This is the, this is a time of change in healthcare where specialization is the watchword. And we do not have the demographics to have the type of specialization. One of the things I talked to Roger Hall about, that he mentioned, was that they're spending millions of dollars on equipment, like a new device so that you can have a hysterectomy on an outpatient basis. You go in at seven, come out at two. We can't compete with that type of technology. But we do, we can embrace what is out there based on the instructions that you give staff. And I would hope that you would revisit the instructions that have been given to your staff going forward.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. Anna Carmichael. Today, I'm representing the St. George Island Business Association. And I apologize for the oversight. I'm addressing this during the public comments. But I'm here today to request a road closure for the Snowbird Appreciation Day to be held February the 20th on St. George Island. And the road that we're asking to be closed is from Pine Street West at the stop sign between the bank and the express lane to the other stop sign, which is the corner of Doc Myers and the Beach Pit for the period of 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. We would like to have a block party-type appreciation for the snowbirds, and they can go back and forth between those two businesses. It's just the one road, that little strip of pine, from stop sign to stop sign.
Make a motion.
Sir.
You second, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? But it is only one block, or thereabouts, one block.
One little strip, yes, sir.
Yeah. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor? All opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Any other public comment?